...results and I would also be willing to sit down with any of you as far as discussing ways in which we could increase profitability because there certainly are some, I do have some ideas about that and that's it. So, thank you for your time.
If you would, please give us your name and your municipality.
Yes, I'm very sorry. My name is Chris Brown. I live in West Rock Hill Township.
Thank you.
Mrs. Spurton.
Sue Farlow, West Rock Hill Township. I noticed that the right-to-know issue is on the agenda for this evening. I want to point out, Mr. Yarnell, that you've been here for quite some time, since the early 90s from what I can put together. And I think for most of your tenure, the district could do its business in near secrecy. There was no avenue for the average citizen to get information unless the district just chose to give it out. But then the right-to-know law was enacted and with that law, the veil was pulled back and the secret world of Penridge School District was revealed. However, I believe that some of you still want to operate in the mode of maybe when you first got on this board, that the citizens don't have a right to know how their money is being spent. And I see that you, on a routine basis, starting in last October, I believe, or November, you decided to start bullying those of us that ask questions and want to know. And we just, you know, we provide the tax dollars and most people have the rule, if I'm paying the bill, I at least get to know what's going on. Maybe I don't get to make the rules here, but I at least get to know what is going on with my money. Now, the right-to-know requests have discovered several things here in Penridge. One citizen has asked for a copy of the insurance report that was referred to numerous times as the reason why poppy odor stands had to be torn down in a right-to-know request. That individual received 500 pages and not one of them was a request from an insurance company to do anything with the stands, to look at them, to tear them down, or anything else. 500 pages. Another right-to-know request led to an independent audit of student accounts, one account. And in one account, it yielded 17 findings of failure to abide by state law, local policy, and acknowledged that there were misappropriations by district employees of significant amounts of the students' monies and property over the five years that were examined. My guess is if you examined 10 years, you would see 10 years. My guess is if you looked at all the student accounts, there might be other ones as well. This was one account, 17 findings. One employee was reimbursed for education expenditures that are not permitted by state law. That was found out through a right-to-know. That same employee was reimbursed for mileage, but no IRS documentation was ever turned in, so he could properly record the fact that he was being paid mileage. The same employee asked for and collected mileage to go to a student's funeral. I find that disheartening. An RTK also revealed that in the reconciliations of the cash for the poppy odor concession stand for one whole season that was looked at, not one $1 bill was ever accounted for at the end of the evening. What happened to all those $1 bills? You ever see the little kids run up to the concession stand with a fistful of ones? They all disappeared. Bus purchases were awarded to the exact same manufacturer year after year despite the fact that right-to-know discovered that they were not always the lowest bidder and in some years when they received those awards for the business, they were the highest bidder. Now, at the meetings, you want to bully the public that we're costing the district? I think the lack of right-to-know has cost students and taxpayers a whole lot more. The board attorney knows that if he gives out bad advice and it becomes a contentious item, whether he wins or loses, he gets paid. And speaking of winning or losing, on seven appeals to Harrisburg, Penridge has lost seven times. Now, the thing that I want to say is that I don't believe your true reason for giving out the costs to fulfill right-to-know is to control costs. You're not a cost-control type guy, never have been. I think your true purpose is to pull back the veil of secrecy so that nobody knows how you're operating this district. And for instance-
Mrs. Spurton, your three minutes are up.
Okay, thank you. I think I made my point.
Mr. Laird.
Good evening. Herb Laird from Bedminster Township. I am a resident, taxpayer, and worker in the Penridge area since 1975. For over 30 years, I have either played or ran the adult evening school basketball program for people over 30 and over 40. We have been in Siler when there was a tile floor in Jews Bedminster and West Rock Hill Elementary Schools as well. Everywhere we've been, we've been a close group, never causing any trouble or doing damage to the gyms. The custodians loved our adult group because we respect the facilities. We are just a bunch of adults who love to get exercise and play basketball. We are mostly all Penridge residents as well as taxpayers who help pay for the schools and feel we should be able to use the facilities. When my basketball group was turned into adult evening school, I was told, "Look at the bright side, you'll be getting paid." I replied, "I'm not in it for the money, only for the friendships and the fellowships that we've had over the years." In closing, Allison Schaper, who was in charge of the adult evening school, has done a tremendous job over the years in running the adult evening courses. I ask you, the school board, to reconsider and keep the adult evening school programs going for my group as well as other groups. The adult taxpayers deserve to be able to use the facilities. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you, Mr. Laird. Bunny Barnes.
Good evening. Bunny Barnes, Hilltown Township. My husband and I moved to Sellersville in 1993 and have been members of the Penridge community for the past 22 years. We do not have children, but have always supported all local taxes, school taxes, tax raises, because we understand how the system works. Despite the fact that we decided not to have children, someone paid for our education and therefore we should pay for future generations. We are both senior citizens on a social security and fixed income budget. Neither of us is very fond of exercise, especially in those big gyms. We are loathe using machines and treadmills as they're just not fun. However, last fall, we discovered adult evening classes in the Penridge Upper Buck Technical School. They were offering ballroom dancing for couples. Wow, we thought, what fun! Due to my osteoporosis and my husband's rheumatoid arthritis, both of our doctors have recommended exercise, but again, we have trouble with traditional exercising. Here's something we could do together. It was a way we could get a little exercise at a reasonable, affordable fee and a way we could have some fun together. Something that would benefit our health and also be useful and for not only for exercise, but also for future events in our lives. We love coming to class each week. We look forward to it each week. And since we're first-time ballroom dancers, this is our first class. We look forward to repeating the class next year in some of the school classes and learning different types of dances. We want to learn the new steps and keep exercising, keep fresh with the review. We work up a good sweat each week and during our practice sessions, but need the continued direction to continue this since it's all new to us. However, now we hear that Upper Bucks might no longer be offering this fine opportunity to the community. The lights and the heat in the buildings need to be kept on in the schools anyway due to the night shift custodial staff. And with online signup, it's hard to imagine how the district can be losing any money with these programs. This is the first time we've taken advantage of something we felt will be beneficial to us in the district that our tax dollars have supported for 22 years. Now we hear it might not be able to benefit from our own school district. How sad and unfair. We hope the school board decides to continue this program for us and for other members of the school district who might benefit from these programs. Thank you for listening and for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Mrs. Kukuch Kavann.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Kukuch Kavann. I'm from West Rock Hill Township. I would like to speak about the adult evening school. This is my second time here involving the volleyball classes that are held Tuesday and Thursday evenings. I do have a question, however. Someone brought it to my attention that there was a proposal involving the continuation. I'm sorry that my colleagues said we could not find it on any March minutes. Maybe we missed it. That was the first question of what was the proposal, what proposed and by whom. However, if it's, we're just talking about ideas of continuing the program. My letter of December 16th, 2014, was directed to members of the Penridge School District Board and the Upper Bucks Votech Building. They contain 27 signatures of current participants playing volleyball. Many of these participants are here tonight. Many of them have played volleyball through the Penridge adult evening classes for over 20 years. I spoke before you earlier this year here at the board meeting and I also spoke at the Upper Bucks Votech Board meeting one evening. I and my colleagues do thank you for reconsidering. I believe the volleyball program sustains itself. I believe the adult volleyball program and the whole evening school program should be based at Penridge School District, not necessarily the Upper Bucks Votech, as a newspaper article stated that the Upper Votech's has felt that its mission is vocational training and volleyball is not in their interests. As Penridge taxpayers, we appreciate being afforded the opportunity to play inside, using the gym, and respecting the school property. We would like to continue to use the facilities Tuesday and Thursday evenings for volleyball. As I've said before, my father took a number of dance classes in the adult evening program and was so thrilled with them, he encouraged me to take some of the classes. I took up the volleyball. It's where I met my husband, where I met a lot of friends, and I am glad that I did. I hope you will reconsider and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Kukucha Kavann. On the agenda tonight, there is a proposal for consideration that has come from the Activities Committee and will be voted upon presumably tonight. Mr. Snyder.
Good evening. Brad Snyder of Bedminster Township. Just have a couple of questions for you this evening. Curious as to why the van truck and trailer is not on the agenda this evening. We had been told that it would be and I don't see it anywhere. Curious as to what it takes to get on the agenda. I mean, when we were here a month or so ago, we talked about the time constraints that would be needed as far as ordering the trailer. That's the way you decided to proceed. And my last question is, I sent an email out on April 22nd and I just wanted to make sure that everybody on the board received it. I know Mrs. Schmidt did because she responded, but I did not receive a response from anyone else. Thank you.
The van truck is, among other things, out to bid, so we have not seen the bids we the board. And once we do, it'll be considered in that context. And in terms of your email, unless it landed in my junk mail, I did not see it. I will check. Ms. Rutlinger.
Stacia Rutlinger, East Rock Hill Township. I am a student here at Penridge and I take a foreign language class. I'm in Latin II with Ms. Gregory. And we have concerns as a class that our Latin program and other foreign language programs will not continue here at Penridge and that Keystone State testing scores will require, will a certain amount will be required to take a foreign language program personally. And I know many other kids feel that foreign language helps benefit them, not only academically, but later on in life in college. And so, I was not planning to speak tonight, but I would, I feel that as a student, I have the right to know what's going to happen to my class. Thank you.
I will tell you that the board will be considering personnel changes, not necessarily what you have suggested. And once they have been discussed, we will obviously report those as part of the budget process. Anyone else wish to speak before we start the meeting? Yes, sir?
My name is Tom Hilsen. I'm a Quaker Town resident. Dr. Yarnell, members of the board. Eight years ago, I invited my wife to take lessons, mother's day gift tour. Best move we ever made. We've been taking classes with Diane and Chris Brown, this is the full eight years now, and also took advanced lessons from the folks that they taught who actually had the Penridge Ballroom Dance Class going. They took over apartment retirement. Just to let you know, I agree with Mr. Brown completely. It's probably some of the best exercise you can get without having to work up a sweat or be an athlete with any kind of professional ambitions. We enjoy it for the fun of it. We go out at least once a month, sometimes two, three, four times a month dancing. And the exercise end of it, as Bunny had pointed out, is fantastic. I myself used to be 275 pounds. That's not the case anymore and I haven't done anything except dance whenever I can. And if it weren't for the opportunity afforded by Penridge to attend the adult evening class, I'd probably be having a heart attack and lay it on doing nothing. If you dropped that class, I think that'd probably be one of the worst things you could do as the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes?
Good evening. My name is Lorelei Bauer and I'm a resident of Perksey Borough. I'm also a student of Diane and Chris Brown. Love the ballroom dancing classes. It has not only provided an avenue for exercise for me, but it has also opened up a realm of opportunity to meet other people with similar interests. And because of that, I am continuing to dance. Made some really good friends through the opportunity of ballroom dance class. I am also a homeowner in Perksey Borough. I have no children, so this is a way that I am benefiting from my tax dollars in being allowed to attend classes in the evening. So, I encourage you all, please, do not discontinue these classes. It's a wonderful opportunity, wonderful program, and it creates community. And community, I think, is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else over here?
Good evening. Tony Pellegi, East Rock Hill Township. Like a few other people that have been up here tonight, we're here in support of the social dance class with Chris and Diane Brown. My girlfriend Shaw and I have taken the class a couple of times now. We found it very, very good, exercise, social interaction, and an opportunity for us to take advantage of our tax dollars as well. Hope you would consider keeping the program open.
I've just recently moved into the township and I've taken adult classes in where I used to live. I'd be really disappointed to see the program canceled. I'd really like to do the volleyball. I haven't looked at the, what the whole selection is, but if there's aerobics and, I'd be interested in those things as well. It would be really disappointing to me to see the whole thing canceled.
Can you give us your name as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. Cheryl Franklin.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Lee Curry, Hilltown Township. According to the PSD website, van trailers scheduled to be, bids were supposed to be opened at 2:00 PM on 4/21. So, was this done? Was this not done? Does it take that many days to go from opening bid back to you guys? I guess that's, that's the confusion that the van parents are having right now.
I don't know for sure. I don't know for sure whether it was done, but yes, it does take time. The board will need to meet and discuss it, probably at the Facilities Committee is my guess, and that will be May the 4th.
Yeah, it is, it's on the agenda for the May 4th. So, we can't do it at a regular board meeting, so we have to do it at a committee meeting first.
Okay. So, the, you guys will discuss those bids at that meeting?
Yes.
Then, then it'll get on-
The next board meeting.
Hopefully next month's agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Presumably the May 18th board meeting is when it'll occur.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Donna Snyder-Sittler. I'm sure you guys have seen me before. I live in Hilltown Township. Most of you don't know that I have run an adult evening school program with the Penridge School District for probably 30 years. I run volleyball classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I know my class has about 28 to 30 people every time we have had a class. And I just want to reiterate the thoughts of everyone. This group right here is a lot of my people that have been playing with me for a long time, both Penridge taxpayers and some not Penridge that live as far as Warminster that do enjoy coming here to play with us. So, just would really like you guys to reconsider and hopefully you will continue the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm Dave Mumbauer from Hilltown Township. I'm involved with the volleyball program too, although it's Wednesday night and we do have just a couple of people here tonight from us, from our group. And there's a lot of wonderful programs, the ballroom dancing, there's yoga that I saw. They seem to have a lot of cars out there. I don't know what their attendance is, but I think that your only consideration should be is, is the program profitable or is it not? If it's not, then maybe those ones should be discontinued. And the ones that are profitable, they add to the township, to the spending of the school district. And there's a lot of community and socialization, as everybody else has said. So, that would be our only request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's Pete Oost. I live in East Rock Hill Township. Grew up in the Penridge School District, graduated from Penridge '75. As long as I've been here, I can remember an adult evening class. And I've had the fortunate opportunity to not only participate in volleyball, but also the ballroom dancing. And if Chris and Diane can teach me to dance with my two left feet, it's just, it's a great program. And the volleyball group, I see some of the guys there, the people who are in their 60s and 70s still playing. I just think it's great. And, and not just about volleyball and ballroom dancing, but some of the other programs, basketball, Latin programs, anything that people can take advantage of at any age, I think is a great thing for the school district. So, I just want to reiterate my support and hope you reconsider. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is items A through J on number five on the agenda. Are there any of these items or specific items within those that board members want voted on separately?
Dr. Yarnell?
Yes?
Item C on Bill's list, we need to make a correction. The first page, check number 16228 was listed as zero, but it should be $315. So, the revised total of the funds out of the general fund is $2,40834.87.
Thank you, Mr. Sarnis. Anything else that people would like voted on separately or any corrections? And I would note that there is an addendum that was sent out this afternoon on the superintendent's personnel report that is included in this. So, if not, do I have a motion to approve items A through J with the correction on C on the consent calendar? Second. Moved by Mr. Sarnis, seconded by Mr. Demme to approve the consent calendar as listed. Comments or questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. Next is the Student Liaison Report, but Mr. Callens is not with us tonight, so we'll move on to the President's Report. I simply want to say that for most of us, spring is a time of renewal and it's a time when those of us who don't have allergies celebrate all the flowers and blooming trees and so forth, especially after a long and cold winter. But for our students, it may not be a happy time because this is the season of tests and high-stakes testing at that. We are nearly through the PSSA season and our students in grades three through eight and 11, as well as 10, are busy taking and of course, need to become proficient at, especially those in 11th grade where they need the proficiency in order to graduate. So, it's a time of some stress. And then over and above that, of course, there are the Keystone exams in the three subjects that come at the end of the year for students who are, you know, and of course, where most of those will be in the senior high school, but some will take that as early as middle school when they take Algebra I and II. So, that is a difficult time. We also have the SAT tests that are administered in May. All these things take time and energy and for students, it's a difficult issue because so much rides on it. And in this day and age, that's true for teachers and administrators as well because these tests, which are meant to be accountable, hold various people to various items. If you've ever been around when the PSSA tests are being administered, which the state dictates how they're administered, you'll find rooms that are completely blanked out in terms of posters, information, so that students don't have any excess information other than what they carry in their heads. And obviously, that's not a very pleasant environment, even if it's not stressful to a student. Obviously, the, this was triggered in part by the No Child Left Behind. It was passed in a bipartisan fashion 14 years ago and intended to make every student in every district proficient. Didn't quite work out that way, of course, and it placed a lot of stress on students, especially special needs students and people who learn more slowly than their peers because initially it was all given the same way to everyone. Some of that has changed and now we're in the time when we're renewing that No Child Left Behind registration. Obviously, the first passage had some unintended consequences and not all good. We'll see what this brings. Again, it's a bipartisan bill being put forth in the United States Congress. Presumably, it will pass and when it does, then we'll find out what we have to do that's different or in addition to what we currently do. different or in addition to what we currently do in order to get students to pass these tests. I would cite as one of the things, one of the unintended consequence, the first Keystone Biology exam that was given statewide. Students didn't do particularly well and a lot of it had to do with the terminology that was involved. As it turned out, the test was not about big concepts, hypotheses, conclusions, experiments, the things that most of us would think should be taught in a science class, but a lot of it had to do with specific terminology. If you didn't know the terminology, then the student didn't do particularly well. Those things forced the district to make changes in their curriculum. I personally don't think learning a lot of terminology is much better than when I went through school many, many years ago and learned, had to memorize all the phyla and kingdoms and so forth. And if you weren't doing that, you were cutting open animals, which some people might have been a joy, but it certainly wasn't for many people. So I continue to be concerned, as others are, about where this is leading us. Beyond that, I do have, for Mrs. Furlong's benefit and others, the right to know numbers tonight. She's right, these were established about October, November, that we started citing them each and every meeting. And tonight's numbers are small relatively, but they are amount to about $7,000 in attorney's fees and of course the time that it takes to process those requests as well. At this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rattigan, who will do the superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Yernell. First, I'd like to say a thank you to Diver Elementary School for the district office meeting room display. Also, thank you to Diver Student Council for the donation of a digital sign at that elementary school. Special thanks to Diane Marie Herring for a donation of new sporting goods equipment that is going to North, Central and South Middle Schools. In our efforts to promote social and emotional learning, May's Takes Pride theme will be dependability. Students will be reminded that dependability is the quality of demonstrating reliability. Each morning, they will hear a quote to reinforce that theme. We have many good items to share with you tonight, so we will start with the Penn South Championship Boys Basketball Team. I believe that Coach Bob Wolfinger is here to explain.
Thank you, Dr. Rattigan. I just want to thank the school board, Mr. Ferry, who arranged for this, to recognize the middle school program at Penn South Boys Basketball. We won the championship, we had a record of nine and one. And recognizing middle school sports to me, because I've coached there a long time, some of you know that, I think is a great thing for the athletes, the students and for the coaches. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfinger.
Thank you, we appreciate all your work with our student athletes. We also want to share with you tonight a short video. It's a minute and a half that has been created by our students in the broadcast journalism class. This will be available on YouTube, so board members, you can either wait and watch it at a later time. I do believe we are going to put the screen down or you can move to the side if you like or go down below. But it's only a minute and a half, but it is powerful and I'll let Martin Cole explain further.
Thank you, board, administration, community and Mr. Ferry for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Martin Cole, I am a senior here at Penridge High School and I don't know what township I came from. This, this video originally started as a contest. My broadcasted journalism teacher, Mr. Friedman, he runs the broadcasted journalism class which creates the video announcements which are shown to the entire school each and every morning. He gave me this project where there was a contest out done by Univevest where they were going to give $2,500 to the group or organization that could create a 90-second video about why they would be deserving of the money. Now, Mr. Friedman was thinking, hey, we can use this for our program. Technology is changing every day and we can always use something new. But I and my partner, Ally Walsh, we had some different ideas and we strayed from our teacher's recommendation and instead we created this video about a group of students in the school that aren't often recognized because most people don't really see them. These kids are in the class known as life skills, also known as the special needs kids. And this video was created for the contest and starting on March 25th, I got the opportunity to be in that classroom and work alongside of them. All the video, all the footage that you will see in this video is completely candid and every time I walk in that room, I can't help but smile. One of the things that this has constantly shown me is how it is a true testament to social and emotional learning, which is the ability to not only identify your emotions and the emotions of others, but to act upon them. And I hope that you will know what I mean by that in this video.
What's the name of the video so we can find it?
Um, if the Penridge High School has their own channel, you look up on YouTube, Penridge High School Video. That channel will have the video there as well as our other daily ramble segments. Along the halls of the classrooms of Penridge High School, there is only one classroom that is truly bursting with life. Good morning! This is the Life Skills Classroom. Here, these kids learn about concepts essential to modern life, including time, funness, finances and technology.
Watching them interact with a customer that comes into the classroom and they're able to do another, that's curious. Because they're always eager to learn, willing to try new things. It's just, it's so rewarding working with them.
These kids use to advance their budget by selling cookies and baked goods from classroom to classroom, but new FDA laws have limited this ability to owning their own classrooms. However, these kids do not let it get the best of them. They continue to learn, interact, write and smile.
What I really like about hanging out with the kids every morning is that I feel loved and respected, just like I hope they feel when they hang out with me.
You know, they don't think that we're helping them, they think of us more as friends than I would really, they do, you know, it works well for them.
When it comes to the Life Skills Kids, they are simply cool and adorable. If I may mention one last item, the contest is completely based on voting. So our, this video will be shown during the week of May 4th. It will be posted on the Univevest website and by the community going and voting for it, it can get sent into the final round of voting where these kids will have, again, the opportunity through your votes to win the $2,500. Thank you.
Okay, great job, Martin, and good luck to you. Okay, on to the rest of the good news. I had the pleasure of attending the ceremonial ribbon cutting for the West Rock Hill School Garden last week. Soon, the cafeteria will be serving fresh vegetables grown in their own garden as part of a program supported by a grant from Teen Nutrition and Project PA. Local businesses, including Home Depot in Dublin, Agway, donated items such as gardening gloves, watering cans, shovels, plants and soil. In May, members of the student council will help with planting tomatoes, zucchini, cucumbers, green beans, carrots, lettuce and green peppers in garden boxes and herb garden and a hanging tomato garden constructed by district employees. Thanks to Mrs. Gina Girantana, our Director of Nutritional Services, for taking the lead on this project. Speaking of food, congratulations to Penridge student chefs Colin Bloom and Liam Phillips for taking home the People's Choice Award at the sixth annual Skilled USA Culinary Challenge at the Lehigh Career and Technical Institute in Schenexville. Both students attended the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Colin is a senior and Liam is a homeschooled junior. They won the award for their Texas-inspired lime chipotle grilled shrimp tostados. It was the second year in a row that the school has taken the top spot in the event. The Penridge Percival Rotary Club honored seniors Nick Callums and Anita Varkey as Students of the Month for December and January respectively. Nick has been a member of student council for four years and currently is serving as president. He plans to attend American University to study communications, legal institutions, economics and government. Anita has been involved in drama, the yoga club, executive council, academic challenge and the National Honor Society. She plans to major in biology in college and eventually become a veterinarian. Congratulations to Penn Central 7th grader, Bill Jurgen, for winning the Scripps Regional Spelling Day held at the high school on March 28th. Bill earned a trip to the national competition by topping out 53 other school champions from Bucks and Montgomery Counties. His winning word was flagitation, which means urgent demand. I wonder how many of us would have gotten that correct. They really had some tough words, I was very impressed. As a 4th grader at brass, Bill finished third, followed by a 3rd place finish in 5th grade and a 4th place finish last year before moving on to junior high. Talk about persistence. The Scripps Regional Spelling Day is sponsored by the Penridge Community Ed Foundation with financial support from the Council for the Advancement of Public Schools, the Intelligencer Newspaper, the Penridge Percival Rotary Club and Tiger Printing Group. An art project 10 years in the making has finally become a reality. During the annual district art show last month, we officially dedicated a tile mural near the stairway next to the library. I encourage you to take a look when you get a chance. It really is a spectacular work of art that an estimated 1,500 students had a part in creating. Compromised of thousands of ceramic glass and mirror tiles spanning two walls, the mural depicts several aspects of high school life, including music, athletics and academics. Its center priest is a silhouette of a student made from dozens of small pieces of mirrored glass. Congratulations to the Indoor Color Guard and Indoor Drum Line for their amazing performances at the Cavalcade of Bands. The Drum Line took 2nd place while the Color Guard finished 3rd. Kudos to the student musicians, their coaches and the parents who put in so much hard work. Two Penridge students also won scholarships to the Westchester Marching Band Camp. Stacia Rutlinger, Color Guard and Jared Rogers, Drum Line. Students from more than 20 schools competed for the scholarships. Our high school debate team just completed another successful season. While they lost by ballots cast 2 to 1 against Salisbury in the debate finals, the determining ballot had us losing by only a quarter of a point. Overall, the team came home with the 1st place trophy for the regular season and a finals runner-up trophy. The team also earned a 2nd place in the semifinals in the Lehigh Valley Interscholastic Debate Association League. The team is coached by Miss Lisa Mederick and includes Casey Hoffman, Nick Parsons, Julia Frederick and Ashley Landis. Penridge High School seniors, Richard Hayes and Sam Krygda represented Penridge High School at the 2015 National Music Education, All Eastern U.S. Choir in Providence, Rhode Island. To qualify for this choir, Richard and Sam needed to be in their respective All-Star Choir last year and then go through a selection process based on their rankings. This choir is made up of students from 16 eastern states as well as Europe. In the past 18 years, they are the first Penridge students to qualify to be part of this elite choir. It's a great honor and achievement. 12 members of the Penridge Technology Student Association Club attended the 2015 Pennsylvania State Competition to compete against more than 1,200 students from 84 high schools. The results are as follows. Hannah Card, 1st place in the state for material processes. Tom Cantner and Hazma Lokodmy, 5th place robotics. Hannah Card, Edison Fowler, 7th place structural engineering. Mason Sheets, 8th place transportation modeling. Edison Fowler and Steven Sax, 8th place robotics. Tom Cantner and Nate Engler, 9th place structural engineering. And Bobby Lawson, 10th place promotional graphics. Hannah worked extremely hard to receive this award. Her project was a walnut and curly maple vanity. It has two sets of three drawers with raised paddle sides and backs. The project was completed with great attention to detail. The back of the vanity looks as nice as the front. She insisted on doing everything to the best of her ability. Hannah spent many hours before school, during lunch and study hall, after school and weekends in the wood lab, trying to accomplish her goal. At home, many long nights trying her best to complete the project. For Penridge, this is a great accomplishment. In the last three years, we have dominated at the state level. On behalf of the Penridge High School Golden Rams students and teachers, I invite you to attend this year's Da Vinci Day at night, an evening designed to share and celebrate student creativity, innovation and learning. It will be held this Thursday, April 30th, starting at 6:30 in the auditorium and is the culmination of their Da Vinci Day that began in January when students picked a topic of interest and spent hours researching and planning their in-depth presentations. I am confident you will be impressed. Finally, two more sports-related accomplishments. Congratulations to the Penn Central Girls 4x100 meter relay team, which competed last Friday in the 2015 Penn Relays at Franklin Field Stadium in Philadelphia. The team of Abby Groff, Corey Peace, Molly Groff and Sarah Williams finished 2nd overall in a school record time of 52.72 seconds. And congratulations to four senior student athletes who announced their college plans recently. Carol Wyerman will bowl at Chestnut Hill College. Austin Patrick will play soccer at East Strasburg. Taylor Chapman will run track at Iowa State University. And Nyla Sloan will play water polo at Utica. So once again, board, we have many wonderful things going on with our student body. That's my report, Dr. Yernell.
Thank you, Dr. Rattigan. At this point, we'll move to committee reports and the first one is activities. Mrs. Yardley?
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. So the activities committee did not meet this month, but we did meet in March where we discussed a proposal for the adult evening school. And I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and sharing their opinions. Mr. Ferry presented a proposal and that is a motion tonight. And I guess just a little background, that a few years ago, the Adult Evening School moved to the Upper Bucks Vocational Technical School and it was the JOC that decided this year to stop running the program for various reasons, including financial and because of all the construction that is going on there. So Mr. Ferry had a great proposal to, for Penridge to continue it and create it as a self-sustaining entity. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the adult evening school proposal.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the proposal provided by Mr. Ferry for Penridge Adult Evening School, starting in the 2015, 2016 school year. Comments or questions from board members? Well, I will make one comment. Indeed, as Mrs. Yardley said, this program has been in place many years in Penridge. And then when it started to not be profitable, it was transferred to Upper Bucks as a way of trying to improve the efficiency. And indeed, Penridge subsidized that program to the tune of about $40,000 a year, over and above what was paid for by the participants in the program. And, and that kept it afloat for a while. The audited reports last year though showed a 15, and Penridge ceased the subsidy, I should add that, but the audited reports last year showed a 15,000 deficit. Now, that's conflated by the fact that it's the adult evening school at the Vocational Technical School, along with those at Quakertown and Penridge, all which were run from a central operation. As Mrs. Yardley said, the Upper Bucks Joint Operating Committee decided in this December to close the programs, actually, I believe.
Actually, I believe Quakertown's closed at the end of the first semester. Penrich ran this semester as well, partly because of the construction, partly because of the concern for safety and security. I don't know if you've been to the Upper Bucks Technical School, but if you have, it was built in the 1960s on a very open campus approach, which was popular then. In today's climate, less so, simply because there's limited security, and one of the concerns was that there were very few supervisors there at night when these classes were out. So as someone said, the plan is, once the construction is completed, buildings are connected, the Joint Operating Committee would like to resume these classes, but they will resume them there based on skills that can be acquired and will help the students and adults in their jobs or in looking for additional jobs. My only concern with this proposal is that we keep good accounting so that we know that we are actually in the black each and every year, which has always been the objective of this, but hasn't always been the actual situation in the recent past.
Anyone else? Not Mr. Sarnes?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't go to the meeting, but I'm, I'm just curious, maybe, Mr. Sarnes, the expenses that are there, the administrative, the supervisor, I can understand the marketing, but what, was there some examples of what all these expenses are, or will they involve any employees of the district, or?
I can't answer that. I don't know if Mr. Ferry can answer that.
My proposal would be that, that I would share some of the revenue from the tuition that comes in. So if we shared the revenue with the, with the instructors, 40% for the instructors and 60% for the district, we would cover some, we would cover all the expenses. So really, there is no way we could lose money on this, on this proposal. As long as we're taking 40%, as long as we're taking 60% of the tuition, we could never lose money. And that's, that's really the crux of the proposal.
Okay, so, so any, so any contracts with these people would specify that they're only going to get 40% of what's?
Right. Right.
How, I'd ask the question before, how was it done at the tech school? Was it just a set amount for each instructor?
The instructors at the tech school were paid an hourly rate, depending on how many hours their classes ran.
Okay. So this will change to just a percentage?
This would, this will also incentivize the instructors to bring in more students, because the more students they bring in, the more money they can make. And as you can see from the proposal, it did work out to about a 40% tuition rate anyway.
Right. And so I don't know if you answered it. So will there be, besides you, will there be district employees working?
I don't think there would need to be any district employees other than myself involved. There's online registration, which can be done through a setup that the tech school already has, and mail can come into me, and I can handle the organization of that. It would just be making deposits into the district account.
When were they going to start, Joe?
I would start this, for this fall, so I'd need to start organizing now.
And supervise?
And supervise, sure.
Yes. The operation and also the supervision of the program that was part of your proposal.
Exactly.
So, I'm sorry. So you are going to take, you yourself will take some of this, right?
Right.
And so you're a district employee. I mean, did you consider all the PICA and the PISers?
Yeah. I mean, this, this, at this point, is strictly a expectation of what could happen, based on the, the passion I hear tonight, and maybe even more successful than I proposed here. I think I took a rather conservative approach to what it could be, and it may be this the first year, but I hear a lot of passion for this kind of education in the community, and I would certainly expect it to grow.
And is, is your, what you're going to take out of this flexible too, depending on what we make?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mrs. Yardley?
Our next meeting is May 6th, at 6:30 PM here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the Curriculum Committee. The Curriculum Committee did meet on April 20th. Those minutes have been posted. I have one motion from that meeting tonight. The District Music Department Coordinator, Mr. Andrew Drago, asked to complete the NAMM Foundation Survey on behalf of the school district. This recognizes exemplary music programs. Obviously, Mr. Drago feels that Penrich should qualify for that, and this would be something that he would do on behalf of the school district. There would be no specific cost to the district for the participation in the survey. So I would make a motion that we approve that request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Urnel, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to approve the Penrich Music Department Coordinator request for a survey. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. The next Curriculum Committee meeting will be held on May 11th, 2015, at 7:30 in this room. Facilities, Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Facilities Committee met on April 13th. The next, the following three motions were discussed at that meeting. First motion is to approve Change Order Number 1 from Ace Electric for a credit of $29,893.75 for unused allowances.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Sarnes, to approve the Change Order Number 1 from Ace Electric. Comments or questions from board members? Mr. Casper, do we know whether this is the last of the credit allowances, or is this still not the last of this project?
I do not know personally. I guess we could, I would doubt that it is, but we could ask.
So the answer is probably not?
We're not finished yet.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions on the motion?
Is this, is this money coming to us, unused? So what about the labor, then, that's, that is attached to those parts? Do we get any kind of return on that? Isn't the labor included with the parts when they make these bids? No? I want to see your answer.
Well, these aren't parts that are coming back. This is money that we put into as, as an allowance, so that in the event that we need to do something, you know, we dig up a hole and we needed to do something that we didn't see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for explaining that.
Anyone else? Anyone else? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Second motion is to authorize a letter of credit issued by Quakertown National Bank in the amount of $234,973.75 in favor or to East Rock Hill Township related to Phase 2 of Helmut Field.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Thompson, to approve the letter of credit. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Third and final motion is to obsolete items A, B, and C.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Regomo, to approve the obsolete items listed in A through C. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for May 4th.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Sarnes?
Thank you, Dr. Urnel. The Finance Committee met twice, on, first on April 8th, and then on April 13th. So I have several motions. The first is a motion to approve the contracts listed, and they are A through H, although I need to make a correction on A. I believe that's the high school class of 2017. We've had trouble with these names ever since that meeting, but they keep changing on me. But the first one is the high school class of 2017. G and H are correct. That's.